Okay, as people are continuing to walk in, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'd like to call to order the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education, the regular meeting on July 19th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the Performing Arts Center of the Mount Pleasant High School. This is a meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education. It's a meeting conducted in the public but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please silence your cell phones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Inishina'abe people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Inishina'abe people and their ancestral land is an expression of gratitude and appreciation in a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial and whose land on which the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within its history. Next is roll call.
Dana Cockens.
Here.
Courtney Stegman.
Here.
Sheila Murphy.
Here.
Willian Pangle.
Here.
Jessica Jernigan.
Here.
Amy Bonn.
Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to change or see different? Not seeing anything. Next is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. The first item on my report this evening is our Neola Bylaws and Policies. As you are aware, twice a year, Neola provides us with updated policies. This is our spring update. We will do as we always have, or we'll do two readings. Tonight, we'll go through them. We'll give the board members opportunity to ask questions. We'll read them again at our next board meeting before we ask for any approval. So I'll turn over to Linda to walk through the policies with us.
Yes, good evening. This is a nice, long list of policies, so if you need any further information between now and the next meeting, please let me know. Policy 7450 is a property inventory policy. This is a revised policy connected to EDGAR. EDGAR is about properly accounting for our federal dollars. This revision deals with property inventory and adds that proper sales procedures are established to ensure the highest possible return if we sell equipment or property. And the district may also request disposition instructions for property inventory acquired with federal funds. Policy 7455, this is a revised policy connected to EDGAR as well. This is about making sure we're keeping track of our federal dollars. The main change here is that there are some title changes, for example, from business manager to chief financial officer, and some general terms were added to describe the meaning of land and building. Policies 1422, 3122, and 4122 are grouped together. They are all related to nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunities. These three revised policies update our compliance with federal Title IX changes and the office of civil rights requirements. This update brings Title IX compliance into these policies. We have already updated all of our specific Title IX policies previously. Policies 1623, 3123, 4123 are grouped together as nondiscrimination, anti-harassment in relation to Section 504 and ADA, which has to do with students with disabilities, and emphasizes nondiscrimination and anti-harassment for employment for individuals with disabilities. And again, that is connected to Title IX updates that we've previously done. 1662, 3362, and 4362 are, again, nondiscrimination, anti-harassment policies. These revised anti-harassment policies update the district's stance on all forms of harassment, including retaliation, and ensure alignment with the other Title IX and antidiscrimination, anti-harassment policies that we have. Policy 5517 is another nondiscrimination, anti-harassment policy. This revised policy, again, updates vocabulary to align with the new Title IX terminology. Policy 2260, 2260.01, 5517, and 2266, these are revised policies with emphasis on protecting students who are identified as Section 504 or American with Disabilities, with an emphasis on those students in vocational education. This adoption makes us compliant with 504 and ADA. Policy 5341, 5342, and 5343, these are new policies, and they help us be in compliance with a new Michigan law that has to do with a do-not-resuscitate law. 5342 is a new policy that helps us comply with Michigan law that says we do not resuscitate. We will not allow, we do allow a do-not-resuscitate order for minors under appropriate circumstances. 5343 is a new policy necessary to comply with the new state statute of setting specific procedures that schools must follow if they receive a physician's order for the scope of treatment from a student. 7440.01 is video surveillance. This is a revised policy due to the significant increase in virtual learning this past year. This allows the district to use pre-recorded, rerecorded lessons for observations of online virtual learning sessions as part of the employee's evaluation. This is an example of the use of technology monitoring for appropriate purposes. Policy 8321 is a criminal justice policy. This is a revised policy which includes the latest review of procedures by the DHS in regard to the use of criminal records and information that we use, that used by school employers. Policy 8330, student records. This revised policy complies with an obligation not to disclose the address of a student who provides the district with notice that they have received a participation card issued by the Attorney General under the Address Confidentiality Program Act. This is, again, required to comply with Michigan law. Policy 8400 is a school safety policy. This revised policy reflects changes in regard to the Sex Offender Registration Act, and this revision helps us comply with Michigan law. 8500, food services. This revised policy adds emphasis to prohibit any stigmatization to students who lack funds to pay for their meal or have unpaid meal charges. And Policy 8510 is a wellness policy. This revised policy reflects updated requirements for evaluation and review of the district wellness policies and monitoring for our compliance with the Health and Hunger-Free Kids Act. That was amicable.
If there are no questions for Linda at this time, certainly feel free to email her any questions that you might have over the next two weeks, and then we'll revisit all these policies again at our next meeting.
Thank you.
The next item under my report is an update for you all. As you are aware, we did recently survey our community. I just want to make sure I can get this up here. So, we sent a survey out last Sunday, so just over a week ago now, with information, asking our community just sort of some touchpoints regarding our return to school in the fall. I think it's important to note that last year, we were required, under the return-to-school legislation, to do certain things each month, to provide certain information to our community and to our school board, and all those requirements for the 2122 school year have gone away. And so we know that, certainly, it's on the forefront of everyone's mind, myself included, what will school look like and what will we want to do moving forward. So, the idea with this survey is not meant to be scientific. It's meant to get a feeling for the pulse of our community, to get a sense for where our stakeholders stand, and that would include our parents, our students, high school and middle school students, and then certainly also our staff members as well. So we had right around, excuse me, we had right around 1,600 folks complete this survey, the largest group, which is to be expected, are parents of high school students and parents of students in multiple grade levels. Based, I'm struggling here to get this maybe a little bit bigger. The biggest question that our survey asked is, based on the current status of COVID-19 in our community, what are your thoughts about masking? And it's quite clear that 68.3% of our community felt that students should not be required to wear masks. The next largest section was that students, all students should be required to wear masks at 15%, and then 12% thought that students in certain grade levels should be required to wear masks. We went on to ask about staff members. There we go, that's how I wanted to make that larger. Let me go back, just so everyone can see that again. Probably a little bit more viewable for you all, I apologize. Yep, so again, that's just a breakdown of who took the survey. 21% of the folks that took the survey were high school parents, 20.7% were parents in multiple grade levels, 13% of the people that took the survey were staff members. And then looking again at the thoughts on masks, 68.3% said all students should not be required to wear masks, 15% said all students should be required, 12.4% said students in certain grade levels should be required to wear masks. The next section asked about the thoughts of staff wearing masks, and just over half, 52.3% said that staff members should not be required to wear masks. The next group, 33.7% said that staff members who have not been vaccinated should be required to wear masks. We wanted to make sure that our goal, that our goal was clearly communicated to our families, that they knew that our plan is to return to full-time, face-to-face learning for the fall. And so that was the next question, basically saying, yes, that you understand that that is our goal. Then the next two questions of the survey were short-answer questions. One was in regards to specific needs or unique circumstances that might require a family to request virtual learning. And then the next question was, just what other comments do you have for us? Because certainly, we know that everyone has a thought, and so we wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to do that. So, I sorted through 33 pages of comments, and then I really appreciated the variety of thought, and tried to really group them into two different areas. One area being those families that expressed the desire to, I'm going to say, return to "normal," and I'll put "normal" in air quotes because what is "normal" anymore, but to return to "normal," meaning no masks, not requiring the vaccine, not requiring testing, and those kinds of things. And there were right around 200, actually, I counted, 201 comments from folks that made those comments in the survey. The other group that I looked at was specifically what parents or folks that took the survey said that certain groups of students, if not vaccinated, should be required to wear masks. And there were 124 comments to that end. So based on that information, again, really, we're just looking for a snapshot for the feelings of our community. I put together this correspondence that I wanted to review with you all this evening and then send out to our families tomorrow. First of all, noting that this is where we believe our protocols are as things stand today. Certainly, we know that this is a very fluid situation, changing all the time, and so we need to continue to be flexible as we have over the last 18 months. In the letter, I include links to our academic calendar, and also make note that our balanced calendar classes start on August 4th, which is frightening that that is two weeks from Wednesday. Frightening because I believe the summer is going by so quickly. And then our traditional calendar classes start on August 23rd. The style of this letter is an FAQ. I have borrowed many of these question and answers from area districts and schools across the state, so I'll just walk through them with you so that you have an idea of the tone of this correspondence. Will we be in person this fall? Again, yes. We'll offer a five-day, full-day program for all students in grades DK through 12. Will we offer a virtual option for students? I think this is a really big question, and I do certainly understand why some families are interested in a virtual option. The bottom line is that for us to be able to offer a virtual program similar to the Oilers Online program again this year, that would be next to impossible. So what I've asked in this correspondence is that if families have extenuating circumstances where they would like their child to be in a virtual program, to contact Linda so that together Linda and I can work with those families to determine really what the needs are. In our heart of hearts, we believe that students learn best in person. We do understand that there are extenuating circumstances, so we need to weigh out those pros and cons. The reason why we've asked for families to contact Linda is because we want to get this process started for families that are interested right away. If we wait for building administrators to return, that's another two weeks, so we'd like to get moving on that. Are face masks required at school? No. Face masks will be a parent guardian choice for the 2021-2022 school year. Face masks are strongly recommended for students and staff members who are not fully vaccinated. Again, this is consistent with every other school in our region and every school that I've seen across the state. Are face masks required on the bus? I shared with the board members last week, I recently learned from the Central Michigan District Health Department that they are requiring, masks are required on a bus as a mode of transportation. Because we are a public school, it is considered public transportation, and therefore masks are required on the bus. Will my child be required to get the COVID-19 vaccine to attend school? No, the COVID vaccine 19 is not required on the list of vaccinations, and there's a link there so that families can see what vaccines are required by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Will we separate students who are vaccinated from unvaccinated students? Will students be in cohorts in the classroom or in the playground? So the answer to that today is no, and again, as of June 22nd, MDHHS has discontinued all gathering limits for any residential or non-residential setting. That is class size, social distancing, those are things that will continue to be addressed as we move closer to the start of the year. Last year, we really focused on the four to six feet range. The CDC talks more about three feet, and so we want to try to figure out how much space we can have for our students in classes, but the bottom line is that we don't know what that'll be until we know what class sizes will be. Will contact tracing continue? So, there's information here regarding our school board policy 8450 and Michigan Law Act 368 of the Public Acts of 1978, which is the revised school code. Schools are required to report communicable diseases, and in this letter, there's a link to the diseases that we are required to report and have always been required to report. COVID-19 is included on that list. That's not a change from what we've done for many, many years. Will we quarantine students? It's important to note that all quarantines will continue to be issued by the Central Michigan District Health Department. That line became blurred this last school year when we were working as an agent of the Health Department trying to manage the pandemic. So again, all quarantines will be issued by the Central Michigan District Health Department. Will we continue with additional cleaning? We have reviewed all the cleaning protocols that we use this past year, and we are maintaining the higher number of staff members in each building so that we will be able to continue to disinfect, to continue to have those stations, and to continue offering that clean environment. You also remember from Josh Rhodes' presentation, we were able to purchase additional of the Clorox 360 machines, so that disinfects large space very quickly, and we'll be able to continue to do that this upcoming year. Will student athletes be tested for COVID-19 in order to participate? At this time, no. Again, we will continue to take our guidance that's set forth by the Michigan High School Athletic Association and MDHHS. Will any student need to be tested for COVID-19 to attend school? Again, that answer is no. We believe that getting tested is a parent choice. We do encourage students and staff to get tested if they believe they've been exposed to COVID-19 or they, excuse me, they happen to show symptoms of COVID-19. Another really important piece of this will be our continued partnership with our parents and guardians so that they continue to evaluate their child every morning for symptoms. The bottom line is that we can't have families sending sick children to school. So we'll continue to request that partnership, which really, our parents did a great job of that this last year, and I expect that will continue. So, the goal of this communication is to provide clarification to our families. As I send this out, I met this morning with all of our superintendents in our region. Several of them have already sent out correspondence to families. Several of them are waiting. We do have a Health Department meeting scheduled on July 29th, so they are waiting until like August 2nd, until after that meeting. I felt like we need something to go out to our community now, and if I have to make a revision after that meeting on the 29th, I would certainly do it at that time, but I believe that our community needs to know where we stand, and these are our recommendations at this time. So, I would be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
I do have some questions.
Sure.
First, thank you for putting this together, and especially for getting us and everyone here an idea of the 33 pages of comments that we got, because I think it's important to acknowledge. When I went through them, it was pretty obvious that there's a big split. I do think that we did a really good job last year at making sure that we prevented outbreaks at school. We know what we did worked, and we, I think, all feel that safety is really important for our students. However, the pandemic is not over, and I feel strongly that we should continue to follow what we did last year. And what we followed last year was the CDC recommendations, the Central Michigan Department of Health recommendations, and now we can add to the list the American Association of Pediatrics, and they all recommend that if vaccinations are not available, which would be under 12-year-olds, that kids indoor need to be masked at school. And so, I love the letter, I think it's very clear of the format, that's the one point I would like to see changed. I don't know how we can move forward if we, I don't want to delay the letter either because I think it's important for our community to know when they sign up, what they sign up for. I feel strongly too, because we are removing the online component of our program, and I get it. I get that it's not sustainable to do another year like we did, and I appreciate your effort with Linda to work with families one-on-one for those cases, but...
I think, just to interrupt really quickly, I think it's important to note that I don't believe that we're removing the online option, especially for our secondary students. We do have a variety of different options for online programs, so that might look like Odyssey Ware, that might look like the WAVE program, so we do have some other options, but it will not be the Oilers Online program where our teachers are teaching our students. Elementary is a little bit more challenging, but so far, the requests that we have, it does look like they're predominantly secondary requests for online, so just, just to be real clear that we...
That's good that everybody knows that. But what it does mean is that, so I mean, it's tricky, because if you read the American Association of Pediatrics, they actually recommend all kids to be masked, and it's, I understand the parent choice, especially if vaccines are available, so 12-year-old and up, it is, you know, it becomes a parent choice, and I fully respect that. Those that are at high risk have a choice to be vaccinated and therefore can come to school and stay safe regardless of what others are doing, because even if the small percentage that they get sick, the likelihood it's a severe sickness really goes on with that vaccine. What I'm more concerned about is those that don't have access to that vaccine yet, and so what I would recommend is, you know, that we follow CDC very clearly, and until vaccines are available, those grades, so that would be roughly what DK through, it gets tricky, right, sixth, seventh grade, how we would handle that, and remove the mask mandate once vaccines are available so that then again, parents have the choice, vaccinated or not, but we're keeping the kids from being, you know, from having these outbreaks that I do believe, as a scientist, we probably are going to see otherwise.
I would say that there are many studies, and globally, as well as in the US, showing that masks don't work.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, because most of that is not good science.
A lot of it, just because, I mean, I'm sorry, this has been a very politicized thing.
So, I'm gonna let you talk, but I'll respond.
Your studies don't, but there are studies that show opposite, and so there needs to be someplace in the middle. And if you look at the history globally, these kids, these young kids especially, do not get it as badly, they do not spread it as badly. Asymptomatic spread has been questioned, highly questioned, that people who are asymptomatic do not spread. Most of these kids don't even know they have it unless you test them. So unless they're coughing, unless they're, you know, sharing spit, there's not going to be a spread, and that's been shown across the world in multiple schools where they have masks and haven't masks.
So I'll disagree, and as a scientist, I feel that we need to follow the science of our country. And if the CDC says so, if the American Association of Pediatrics says so, and if even our Central Michigan Health Department, what we got last week recommends, it's the first slide, we recommend every child under 12 to stay masked. Now, I don't know, I mean, I know it became political. I fully understand that. As a scientist, that makes me sad. Health should not be political. And I ask everyone to stay respectful. There's a time for public comments. I'm sure love to hear what you have to say. I don't know how we proceed. I really don't want to hold that letter. I don't know if we go to a vote, and as a board decide. This is where then I'm going to turn that to you, Jennifer.
You know, we can debate all we want about what is a valid study, whether they're peer reviewed or not. For me, bottom line is, I don't feel arrogant enough to say that I know... Sorry. Thank you. I don't, what I said was, there's lots of studies, some peer-reviewed, some are more valid than others, maybe because it's been politicized, but bottom line for me is, there's now come out with the CDC and the AAP that are saying, the science says that students that are not, at least those that have not been given the opportunity for parents to decide whether they should be vaccinated or not, they should be masked. And I tell you what, if we, I could not live with myself if we go out against those two, the AD, I'm sorry, the CDC and the AAP, and we say, no, we're not going to listen to you because we think we know better, and we had a fatality here, I couldn't live with myself, and that's not why we are on this board.
Thank you, Dana. And I think it is important to remember that, yes, we're all tired of this. I get it, but it's not, you know, it's, and while I really do respect the survey results and that, you know, majority of our community would prefer, what, 68%, I don't think that should be what basis our choice tonight, unfortunately. I do think that safety is what's most important. We all want our schools open, and while I understand the restrictions with the online Oilers or the restrictions, you know, with the social distancing, that's hard. We can't welcome all our students if we put the social distancing in place. If we have the six feet, they just don't fit. The masking is the one thing we know works, I'll disagree, Sheila, it works, and that is fairly straightforward to enforce the students in the classroom last year. For most of the times, we're actually compliant, they were doing it, and I really, I mean, I'll advocate strongly for this point.
I'd like to add something. I know that you talked to and looked at what other local schools were doing. I just wanted to add that the Saginaw-Chippewa Academy, they're doing cohorted classrooms again this year. They're doing social distancing inside classrooms, they are eating lunch in classrooms, and they're wearing masks in common areas, that includes buses, and teachers and staff are following the same protocols as students. They have two staff members who haven't been vaccinated yet. Everybody else is vaccinated, but teachers are still going to follow the same protocols they're asking students to follow. Thought I'd throw that out there.
A couple things I, do you want to? I just want, you know, Sheila, you said that we need to kind of find like a middle ground, and I do believe that focusing on our younger students who don't have the ability yet to be vaccinated versus the whole K-12 district, I think that in itself is a middle ground. I think focusing on, okay, we cannot control this group, there's no way for them to have the same opportunities as the ages 12 and up. I think that is our middle ground. I also am curious, if you know, Jen, why only about 12% of our staff responded to the survey?
I don't. I mean, it could be a timing issue, not all staff members check their email all summer. I don't have a good answer for that.
And to that point with staff, I did find it interesting that, you know, 68% of folks who responded say no masks, but yet less than that, you know, think that our staff don't need masks, and 34% of them think that our staff need to have masks if they're not vaccinated. So I'm just concerned why we're thinking that there's any difference between our staff and students as far as COVID, because truly there's not at this point.
Okay, these people aren't masked anywhere outside of the school, are they?
This school is our responsibility. So if they get sick outside, at least I won't feel like it was my fault. If they get an outbreak in the school, it's on us. Yeah, so if there's an outbreak at school, it's on us. Like, it's on the board and what we decided. If they have an outbreak at the supermarket, that's not, I won't feel responsible. I'll feel sorry, and I'll have a lot of empathy, but I won't feel like I was responsible for the outbreak at the supermarket. And so outside, yes, parent choice, absolutely. I understand for the vaccine that it's parent's choice, but for the masking, to me, like, that's the least we can do.
For these littles, though, to have those masks on and not to see facial expression, not.
My three-year-old does just fine, Sheila. And truly, if we go out somewhere and I ask him to wear one, it's nothing.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about their ability to learn.
They're gonna be in the classroom, though. This is.
A lot of the studies that I've been reading say that it does affect the little, their learning ability, to not be able to see face.
But don't you think so does them not being in school because of a communicable disease that we can prevent with masks?
Okay, you know what, please, in the, you will all have a chance to speak, but please keep quiet for this time.
I mean, if you feel, if the parent's choice is that they're afraid of it, then have them mask their children. That's their choice.
But the problem of that argument is that they are exposing themselves, even if they're masked. We've all seen the diagrams of the CDC, right? You have one layer of protection by masking yourself, but if the other party is getting masked, you dramatically increase the protection and the safety of that child. And I don't think we can just say, you know, we know what's gonna happen. If we strongly recommend and don't mandate, we're gonna have, I would guess, less than half the kids with masks, and it's gonna all come from what, you know, what happens at home and what they hear at home. I don't feel comfortable with that. I wish I did, I really don't. And so, I mean, we could debate on this all night, and I know it's a polarizing topic. I'm fully aware that what I'm stating is not necessarily popular. However, how do we proceed from there? Do we disagree? Do we vote? Do we postpone? I mean, I really don't want to postpone that letter either.
So at this point, the letter for parents is not on the agenda to be voted on. We can move it to, so that you all can vote on it. We can hold the letter. We can do, I guess I'll leave that, you know, up to you, Amy.
So something that I'm thinking about with this is that we did start off with saying that the situation is fluid, and I think one of the things that I'd like to think about is we can really, we can only make a decision for right now, and we know that our numbers are lower right now. So, but we also know that our community is wanting answers, I mean, especially with a program ready to go in two weeks. I guess what I am thinking is we know that we have this, this letter immediately based on the science and what we're being told right now. However, I think that, again, we know this is fluid and that this might not be the situation in September, or October, or November, or January, or February. And I think that I would hate to make a finite decision for right now when we don't know what it's going to look like in February. So I guess my thought would be, could we live with, starting with this, so people have the response and then change it?
I would feel much better that we, I agree with the fluid, but let's start with more safe and then remove safety, rather than start with less safe, which might mean a bunch of folks that don't feel comfortable signing with this, leaving our district, because we know that some of those charter online schools start, I mean, they're starting in school, same thing. Like, they started in school beginning of August. Most of them are on a balanced calendar schedule. I would prefer doing the opposite, that we start more safe, and I'll be the first one to acknowledge as soon as I think the numbers are low enough that, yes, let's remove the mandate. I won't hold back, but I would feel a lot more comfortable doing it the other way. And so I would actually suggest we move it to consent agenda and vote and get it over with, and if I'm, if the vote is to keep strongly recommended, I will accept that, but at least I feel like, you know, I tried. And so I don't know how others feel.
Is there any way we can wait until after you meet with the Health Department?
I mean, what I, pardon me, what I could do is I could change this correspondence to answer the question our free space required at school, and at this time, a final decision has not been made. That's, yeah.
I mean, I know for me, I won't change my mind, probably, and I mean, I'd be shocked if the Central Michigan Health Department did not follow the American Association of Pediatrics. I mean, that would really, really shock me. It's possible, right? We don't know what they're gonna say. And I do think we owe it to these families to make that decision, even if it's a hard decision to make. I would prefer we make it tonight. In two weeks, we're gonna have the same, probably the same discussion and the same disagreements, and at least that provides a start of an answer for parents.
Yeah, I'm definitely comfortable with no mask mandate for students 12 and up. I'm certainly.
Same here.
So how do we navigate sixth grade?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Well, because at sixth grade, when you start the year, typically you're 11, throughout the year, you turn 12. That creates a very challenging situation to manage for our middle school staff.
Indeed.
And I would even say the seventh grade as well, as some of them are, for the next few months are doing that. So I would say that the sixth and seventh.
I mean, I would suggest doing the same thing, safety first, and it's easier to remove than to add back on, and so I would suggest any grades where there are 12-year-olds, under 12, right, to mask them.
Given that we are not an entire board tonight with Tim being gone, I think I would prefer to do what Jen had said in regards to leaving that part then, and then continue the discussion and vote at the next meeting. But if everyone else would rather vote tonight, we can certainly do that.
I would also like to say that there's a lot of states who have not mandated masks in schools for quite some time. Is there a way that we can look at what their history, have there been outbreaks?
Yes, there has been.
Where?
Yeah, I mean, most of the southern states.
All of them?
I.
And they've all been school-related. I'd like to see, I'd like to see that data.
We can look.
Because if the majority of states have been open with no outbreaks in the school, then I would say that that would be a good, I mean, it's a good working model, that, hey, it's happening, people have been, we haven't seen outbreaks. It would be probably safe to move forward as we are. If you're uncomfortable with it, then put mask on your kids or wear a mask. But I'd like to see real life, you know, people who've already done it. And if the majority of them are not having any problems, not seeing outbreaks, especially in the lower Ls, unvaccinated, and as we're seeing, there's crossover on the vaccinations right now, so that's not a guarantee either.
So maybe, maybe another update, instead of saying that no decision has been made, I'm just trying to brainstorm, maybe I could change the letter to say that students who are 12 and older and eligible for the vaccine do, will not be required to wear masks. A decision will be made at a later point regarding students 12 and under.
I'm comfortable with that. I just think that we need to, I think we should go ahead and make it clear that it will be at our next meeting, not in the future, but with.
Well, it has to be at the next meeting with.
Balance calendar.
Balance calendar starting, yeah.
How does the board feel about that suggestion?
I mean, I still would prefer getting it over with tonight, regardless of how it goes, but that's my own personal, I'll respect if we want to postpone.
I mean, I think I would reiterate what Willeen said, the likelihood that the discussion is gonna be any different in two weeks is pretty slim.
Sure. I guess my thought is just kind of what Courtney said, was getting through the next meeting with the DHHS, is that who you're in, the Health Department? Again, just thinking along the lines that it is such a fluid situation.
I'm just recommending.
I'm waiting to see if, I mean, if Courtney, Dana, where you stand, or if you want to vote now, or you want to wait for two weeks.
I agree that it's, I mean, we're gonna be doing the same thing. The only benefit I can see of waiting is having some more data to support where we're coming from.
Well, everybody will get a chance to speak during public comment.
I see that as a benefit, just in regard to supporting us, but when it comes out anyway that they're taking the recommendations that everybody else is, I mean, that's gonna support us enough also. I don't know.
And I understand that with Tim missing, we don't have a full board, but if we end up being three and three, then obviously we'll wait for Tim.
And we're, to be clear, we would just be voting on language in this letter as of right now, or are we talking like for sure plan for when we go back?
I mean, I don't know that anything can be for sure, right? I mean, what we know today changes tomorrow, so, but it would, it would be board approval of correspondence that I would like to send out to families. So I don't know, Deb, what, can we move an item to new business now that we've already gone past the agenda approval section? And it's still under my report, so we can't take action on anything under my report.
Do we add it to board discussion? Can, is there anything in?
So it would have to go under new business in order to add it, so can we add an item now?
I don't have a.
Well, I would, I guess I would say that if you all would like to vote on this, we can add that to new business. We will take a vote. We will revisit this with legal counsel, and if we have done something that is inappropriate, we will come back and redo it at our next meeting anyway.
Thank you.
So I probably need a board member to make some sort of a motion to add something under new business.
I motion that we move the mask policy on the letter for parents to the consent agenda for tonight.
Seconded.
You'll have a time to speak. So do we need to do a roll call vote for this?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so.
All right, so roll call vote.
What is the motion?
The motion was to move the survey and letter item to the consent agenda to vote on.
As is?
Under new business, I'm sorry.
As is, written as is or changed?
No, to change it.
Vote to change.
Well, I mean, right now, we're just moving, we're getting a vote to move the item so we can vote on it.
Oh, okay.
So right now, it's just to allow us.
Voting.
Okay. Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Willeen Pangel?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
So that's my report. Okay. Next is the requested financial report.
Good evening. I have for you the requested financial reports for general fund and special service funds, comparing revenue and expenditure current year to budget, or actual to budget for June 2020 and June 2021. This is one of those months where I'm going to be very quick going through this because we're at the end of the year, and you can see on this slide here, this year compared to last year is much different, and that's because we're still closing our fiscal year. So teachers are allowed to spread their salary through the middle of August if they so choose. Those salaries and benefits all have to be accrued back into June. We're still receiving some revenue and sending out some payments that relate to business that happened in the fiscal year 2021. So all those things are still happening. Audit is the second week of August, so by then, everything will be wrapped up and tied out, and this would be much more even. So I'm gonna spare you going through all the percentages on this slide and the next slide, because it will change greatly in the next couple of weeks. But I will take you to the treasures report that shows our cash balances as of June 30th. For general fund, on May 31st, we had a cash balance of $5.7 million. We had receipts in the amount of $4.4 million and dispersments of $4 million. That brings us a balance on June 30th of $6.1 million. For the debt retirement fund, on May 31st, we had $404,000. We had receipts in the month of June of just over $7,000 and dispersments of $10,000. That brings us a balance on June 30th of $401,000. And for the capital projects fund, on May 31st, we had a balance of $2.8 million. We had a small amount of interest income, $86, and dispersments of $238,000. That brings us a balance on June 30th of $2.6 million. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next is the acknowledgement of various correspondence sent to the entire Board of Education. These correspondence were received and put, uploaded into our file for the board members to read, and that was correspondence from Tara Leonard, Heather Wizniewski, Robert Newby, Shannon DeLong, Keter O'Nace, Emily Buckthorpe, Jessica Lapp, and Amy Ford. So next, moving into the consent items. First up is the approval of minutes from the June 29th, 2021 special meeting minutes. Next, the June 29th, 2021 special meeting minutes with closed session, and the approval of the financial bills in the form of $1,130,972.15. Is there a motion to approve those three items?
Tell them up.
Second.
Is there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. Next is new business with, starting off with retirements.
Yes, good evening. First, we have David Durfee retiring from fifth grade at McGuire. David was very well-loved there, and we wish him the very best.
Is there a motion for the retirement?
Is there a motion for the retirement?
So moved.
For David Durfee.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that unanimously passes, and we wish you well on your future endeavors. Next is resignations.
Yes, we have the following resignations. Andrew Beedenbender from PE and Health at the Middle School. Sarah Houck, first grade at Vowles. And Desiree McCormick from Culinary Arts at G.I. Tech. All are off to new locations and new adventures with family.
Is there a motion to pass Andrew Beedenbender, Sarah Houck, and Desiree McCormick's resignation?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That unanimously passes, and we wish them well on their future endeavors as well. And then next is new hires.
Yes, we're excited to welcome several new teachers to our district, and thank you to all the administrators and teachers who have helped with interview committees quite a bit this summer. We welcome Sierra Brown as a classroom teacher at Maguire Elementary. Dana Greenacre as a computer teacher at Mostly Maguire, but also for the district. Sean Larson, PE and Health at Mount Pleasant Middle School. Taylor Nicely, a school social worker for the district. And Anna Reel, a speech language pathologist for the district.
Okay. All in favor of, or I guess, I'm sorry, is there a motion to accept?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes, and welcome to the district. All right. So that then brings back the item pertaining to the letter specific to mask wearing. And I guess, are we talking about the younger grades, or are we talking about the, the whole district K-12? Or DK through 12?
I'm, I'm okay, kind of what Courtney said, and I'm realizing she stepped, oh, here she is. To kind of, you know, find that middle ground by saying if vaccines are available, parent's choice. And so that would be strictly modifying the letter for under 12-year-olds.
I think we need to make it grade level specific, do we? I mean, that's a practical question.
That was, that was a question that I asked about middle school.
I mean, it gets harder with, with the grades. I mean, I, I would be okay saying with trust parents, if you're under 12, you wear a mask. If you're not, then that's up to you. And so I would probably keep it at age that also follows PDC, AAP, and, I mean, we, we're following the same language. I mean, I can make a motion if that's what we're waiting for. So I, I move that we modify the letter to add a mask mandate for any child attending our district below 12-year-olds. That will be subject to change once vaccines become available.
I second that motion.
Do we need to do a roll call, please? Yeah, roll call. All right. Is there any questions or anything else anyone would like to add before the roll call? Dana Cockens?
Yes.
It's just a motion, so there doesn't have to be a roll call vote.
All right, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So that does not unanimously pass, therefore now do we go into a roll call?
No.
Okay.
All right.
That's five to one.
So what does that mean when it's not unanimous?
It means that as is the children of the school 12 and under will go back with masks, and children 12 and older, it is up to the parents' leeway of what they would like to do.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is the citizens' request to address the board. And for those of you who are new to these meetings, I will call your name. Please come up to the microphone and say where you are from and your name. You have three minutes. The timer, Courtney tonight, will be giving you your three-minute warning. At three minutes, please wrap up. You are only allowed to come up to the microphone one time, and then I will call the next person. So Bree Mogenberg, you are the first person on the list.
Hello, my name's Bree Mogenberg. I'm from Mount Pleasant. Before I say what I prepared to say, I want to say I'm completely disgusted by the choice that you just made. These are our kids. They are not yours. They are not your responsibility. They are mine. Step away from my kids and let me choose for them. You don't get to choose for me. You'll see pictured in the picture that I just gave you, my three kids. I have a graduate, I've got a senior, and I've got an eighth grader. I want you to know that my kids are strong, compassionate, and they are kind in character and inclusive to all. If you know them, you know this. And if you know this, you'd probably like my kids to remain in this district. As adults, we teach our children by example. Yet, look around you. Everybody, look. Look around you. Are you being inclusive to everyone? Are you being inclusive to my family, to liberals and conservatives alike, to minorities and whites, to atheists and Christians? Are you treating people equally? Do you even care about including my children, or do they not matter because our beliefs are different than yours? In my humble opinion, it seems you are merely concerned that those believe like you, believe like you. My kids are not your kids. They are mine. Choosing for them over me is not something you should get to do. You are not an exemplary board when you decide to make my family beliefs be invaluable. I believe differently than you, and I exercise my right to speak that. Some of you here tonight have called me names. I have been called racist, homophobic, and a Q cultist. You do not know me if you draw that conclusion from your assumptions on me because I don't believe like you. Is that what we need to teach our children? To assume on others, to not stand up for their beliefs, that it's okay to be derogatory. It is disheartening to see adults act as such, and it surely goes to give an example to the kids of how to not be inclusive. You don't have to like my belief, but if you don't like me and name-call for a difference of opinion, that speaks on your character, not mine. Regardless, I will continue to speak my beliefs. My thoughts are not less of others for being diverse. I not only respect, but I value our differences. Our uniquenesses give us each something special to offer this world. Our creeds may not align, but recognizing and engaging everyone is how we grow. And that is exactly what inclusion is. Not minimizing some while exemplifying others. Inclusion through equality. That is how my children have been raised. And with that, they have been raised to love. I heard a professor here a couple of weeks ago say that it's not about love. I completely disagree. Love is patient and love is kind. Two character traits that we could all benefit from.
Your three minutes is up. Please wrap up your thoughts.
I'm working on it. Thank you. I'm almost done. Let's set an example and love each other enough to start problem-solving. I'm over this public comment, open complaint department. We need an effective method that empowers us to communicate effectively and proactively. Stop leaving the parents out of the decision. These are our kids, and family comes first. And if you don't put family first, you will divide this community. And the choice you just made tonight is a perfect example. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Low Walters, or Waters?
Waters, yes, thank you. Low Waters from Mount Pleasant. I grew up at Mount Pleasant and graduated in '07, and I can tell you that back in '07, life was very different, and being out in high school was nearly unheard of. There was no community sport, and, community support, and especially none from the Mount Pleasant Public Schools. Students needed to have a safe place to learn. There is more to life than a white picket fence, two and a half children, and being married to your high school sweetheart. Our health classes spoke mostly about abstinence and heteronormative relationships. Teenagers and pre-teens will find the answers to their questions. And I believe we would rather they find it from a reliable, safe source, not from blogs or TikToks. So often, our kids are subjected at a young age to terms or phrases like, "Little boy Johnny is going to have so many girlfriends," or "Little girl Suzie is so cute, I bet all the boys will line up." We will allow terms like this and confine our children at young ages to their sexualities. Now, by assuming that all kids are the same, we are not creating an inclusive community. We are creating a community full of underlying judgment. That adversity is not encouraged, and being anything than the norm will not be included or a part of this community. The fact that the group of people don't, do not want to teach inclusivity to the population that suffers significantly from being not accepted and at a higher risk of mental health when it comes to depression, anxiety, suicide, and self-harm. The problem is that the LGBTQ, the problem isn't that they are LGBTQ. The problem is they have no safe places. A school should be a safe place. The reality is so many people say they are okay with LGBT communities, and people from those communities, but as long as it doesn't change anything about their lives. Education is for everyone. Educating the LGBTQ is not only history, it is American history and world history. And it's time that our education system approaches this as such by making the space and providing the resources needed for teaching the next generation a more inclusive, inclusive and just version of history. It's important to teach that there are historical figures that students can identify with and relate to. Everyone should know how many people have died to get basic rights. Not just people from those communities like the LGBT community. Everyone should know what we've had to suffer. The goal should be to implement language representation curriculum that is inclusive to the LGBT community. Thank you for your time, board members.
Next is Pat Heitman.
Welcome. I'm Pat Heitman, and I am a member of Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I'm here to commend Low. That was awesome. And that's kind of what I was speaking to, inclusiveness of our district. I support the school district for showing the way for our staff, our, us as employees, especially our students, for including all souls in our school district. Especially our LGBTQ, our, our special ed, our, our, all our students. That we can educate them and that we can show the other districts what it is that we can do. I want to thank you for starting the committee that you put together, or starting to put together from the last board meeting, beginning the charge of forming the task force to look at the diversity of our school district. Thank you very much for having these board meetings in the open. Thank you very much for listening. I know it's tough, but that's only going to, when, when we look at things that are tough, that's when we grow. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Next is Heather Traumer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mount Pleasant Public Schools board members, for your service during a very difficult year. I appreciate the work you are doing. I appreciate the varying roles of expertise that each of you bring to the table. Especially during a global pandemic, I feel fortunate to raise my family in a school district that has a scientist, Dr. Pangol, on the board, who professionally engages, who professionally engages in analyzing peer-reviewed scientific data. We are lucky to have this entire team of members looking out for our safety and relying on the data that has been proven through scientific evidence. Thank you for creating a mask mandate. This is about safety. Safety should not be negotiable. As you move forward with planning for the fall, I encourage you to follow and create safety protocols based on scientific evidence. My child with autoimmune issues has the right to in-person school too. Masks make this possible. In order to engage in legitimate inclusivity, as is the MPPS vision states, it is imperative that safety is your priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric Roman.
No dramatic turn tonight, I promise. So I'd like, hi, Eric Roman, member of the community for 40-some years now, something like that. I would like to thank the board for allowing us to continue to speak at these meetings. I'd like to thank all the representatives of Mount Pleasant's White Nationalist Party for sharing their thoughts this evening, as well as the members of the evil liberal left. I would like to take a moment to publicly declare my support for Dr. Pangol and McStegman, as well as any school board member who supports fair and balanced education. Thank you. Over the past few weeks, supporters of vaccinations, uh, excuse me, supporters of vaccinations, masking, queer theory, race theory, et cetera, have been called Nazis, indoctrinators, perverts, and other such ignorant and immature names. I've been called by worse by much smaller people. I urge, well, the urge to point out the deeply hypocritical among those folks is very strong. But as Michelle Obama said, "When they go high, or low, we go high." We've heard a lot about what "they" don't want, but here's the thought. Has anyone asked the students what a novel concept? The answer might shock the hell out of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dawn Betha.
Hello, my name is Dawn Betha, and I am a resident of Mount Pleasant. I am the face behind the name on the recall petition for Ms. Pangol and Ms. Stegman. I would like to point out that Ms. Pangol was appointed to this position. No one in this community voted for her to be in this position. I would like to know if there was notification made to the public about the open position on the board. More than just an internal memo, but an actual ad or news article in the paper about an opening on the school board. I would like to see proof that the public was notified. It seems that if there is controversy over the appointment, and then the fact that both of these women have shown bias toward parents and citizens that voice an opposing position, a poison opinion, wouldn't it be better for the board and the community that these women resign? And then there would be no need for a recall. And here is a suggestion. Wouldn't it be better to try and add some diversity to the board? By recruiting another man, or even a person of color? I have no children. I have no children attending this school. However, I am a taxpayer, and my tax bill just arrived. And almost half of the taxes I pay go to support this school system. Therefore, what is taught here and the decisions on how my money is spent is very important to me. I do not agree with a curriculum that teaches critical race theory or equity slash diversity training, or whatever label you want to put on it. Teaching that one race is better than another, or that one race. Teaching that one race is better than another, or that one race oppresses another, or therefore, and therefore that race should be hated, shunned, treated differently, et cetera, is the definition of racism. My children are biracial, so in effect, you would be teaching them to hate one-half of themselves. How ridiculous. America is a melting pot. All races have been mixing for hundreds of years. My mother-in-law is whiter than I am, and she was born to black parents. She has beautiful blue eyes that my son inherited. That proves that somewhere in her lineage, there were other white people. I also do not agree with pushing labels of any kind onto people. Yes, it is important for children to be taught about how their bodies work, in a sex ed class that has been approved by their parents. But labeling people as to what sex they prefer is not something that any child needs to be taught in school. If one of their peers wants to confide in them about their sexuality, that is one thing. But for it to be a topic in a class such as English Language Arts, that is totally unacceptable. It is also-
Your three minutes is up, please wrap up your thoughts.
It is also totally inappropriate for any teacher to bring up her own sexual, their own sexual preferences. Children are in school to learn how to read, write, do math, learn science, and history. Getting back to the basics would solve a lot of issues that seem to be happening all over the country right now.
Please wrap up your thoughts.
Subjects such as critical race theory, sexuality, and politics should be left for when they are adults and in college. Elementary and high school are to build the foundation of education and give them the tools to succeed in the world. Thank you for your service on this board. God bless you, and God bless the United States of America.
Next is Mary Alsager.
Greetings. I'm Mary Alsager, and I live in Mount Pleasant. I'm a retired teacher from the district, and my two children graduated from this district. And I mostly want to say to all of you, thank you for serving on this board, and for having the hard conversations and making the difficult decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jessica Lapp.
Hello, I'm Jessica Lapp. I'm a Union Township resident and parent of a high school student. Thanks to board members for their continuing work serving our community and keeping students and staff safe through this pandemic, and working towards an inclusive environment in our schools. I want to comment tonight on several issues. First, the pandemic. We're all tired of restrictions, but this virus isn't tired, and now there are variants. One of my coworkers today reported her teenage son was diagnosed with COVID-19, and they're in quarantine. We hope he recovers with no lingering side effects. Other countries and other states are experiencing rising numbers of infected and ill people again. Now is not the time to let our guard down. This summer, people can be outside, and windows are open, except for the air conditioning, but we, and we do see decreased numbers. But now is also the time people should be getting vaccinated, because we're migrating back inside in the fall, and we don't want to have spikes in hospitalizations and deaths that we saw last year. I wish vaccines could be mandated. Please follow the CDC recommendations for schools, including masks, especially for the kids who can't be vaccinated at the younger ages. Second, critical race theory. This is not being taught systematically in the Michigan public schools, including Mount Pleasant, and the only reason it's become an issue is because racists want to deny that racism exists in our schools and in our society. Why does the superintendent's report tonight include updates to national policies for non-discrimination and equal employment opportunities? Because racism, sexism, homophobia, discrimination against people with disabilities, all exist in our society and in our workplace. How do we combat these? By establishing policies like these, obviously, and by teaching our kids about these issues so we can all work for change. If people in this community don't want teachers to teach about these issues, then they need to step up and actively work to end these things in our communities, so that we can teach them as history, not as continuing issues. And finally, I want to voice my support for school member, school board members, Waleen Pangol and Courtney Stedman, who have shown leadership with the other board members over the past very difficult year for our schools and our students. I am sorry they are being targeted by a smear campaign for the important work they do in standing up for science and expert guidance by the medical community. I have attended multiple meetings of this board over the last year, and have seen a lot of patience and forbearance on the part of the school board members in the face of pretty poor behavior from the public on several issues, including the pandemic. Please let logic, expertise, and common sense guide your work as school board members, not emotions and conspiracy theories. Please be informed by experts, not by personal opinions, and thank you for your work in our community.
Thank you. Next is Alexia Torres.
Good evening. My name is Alexia Torres, and I am a lifelong resident of Mount Pleasant, a teacher at Mount Pleasant High School, and a soon-to-be parent of a kindergarten bull and panther. One of my closest friends recently asked me, if not you, then who? So here I am. I'll be honest, what I have to say is going to take about six minutes. The speaker right after me, Mr. Ashton Wergo, will continue my words once I'm cut off, but if you'd rather I say the whole thing, let me know, so that way Wergo doesn't have to do his best Torres impression. I'm very proud of my English department, and how most of us commit to yearly professional development geared toward high-school-age students. Thanks to a generous grant from the Community Ed Foundation, we're able to study professional texts on diversity and inclusion in order to support our many LGBTQIA+ communities and our communities of color. Thanks to grants from the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe, next year, our department's classroom libraries will have more diverse texts on our shelves, because it is important that all students see themselves in the curriculum. Nigwech. In mid-March of 2021, my Honors English 9B classes began. As always, I sent a syllabus to all students and parents, as well as a letter that comes standard with every English class at MPHS. The letter is modified from Penny Kittle, and explains why our department does not believe in censoring texts. In fact, the only word that our department does wholeheartedly agree that we should and will always censor is the N-word. This decision came approximately four or five years ago, when a brave young lady of color expressed her concerns with the use of the N-word in our classrooms. The next year, an Honors English 9 students did their research project on our curriculum. That helped open our department's eyes to the lack of diversity within our texts. From that point forward, our department began to revitalize our curriculum, a curriculum that, yes, we have taken through the PSC process. Anyway, the syllabus sent out earlier this year included all of the texts I planned to use this semester's. One of those choice texts, choice texts, included stamped, Racism, Anti-Racism, and You, co-authored by Ibram X. Kendi and Jason Reynolds. It is a text my colleagues and I have heard praises sung about in every professional arena we've been in. It is a text that is written with language geared toward teenagers with, that take the boring aspects out of informational text. It is a text that, yes, has a bias, and that is something that students need to be aware of. Texts have biases. In addition to including all texts in my syllabus that were sent home to parents, I also sent letters home to the parents every month or so, to prepare them for these texts that are going to be coming out, and how they might be viewed as controversial within their individual households. I even included links to the conservative site, commonsensemedia.org, so parents can refer to those book reviews.
Your three minutes is up, please wrap up your thoughts.
I included alternate options for those students whose families didn't approve of their child reading about a certain topic or theme.
Next is Ashton Wergo.
Hi, yeah, I'm Ashton Wergo. I recently was hired at the middle school, and although I'm not Torres, I'm going to continue her speech, but I do wholeheartedly agree with her. So, these are her words, not mine, but I'm gonna say them for you anyway. All right, now specifically regarding the stamped unit, we didn't read the entire book. In fact, we only read the portion of the text that students learned about in their eighth grade history class. It was beneficial to them because of the COVID learning gap. It was interesting to them, because they could think back to what they read in their history text, and what they questioned last year, and continue to question that this year. If you got to know my students this year, you would know that they would never, and I repeat, never, believe something just because it is in print. My students had diverse beliefs and diverse opinions when it came to the topics and themes in this book. And because I am a trained professional with a master's degree in curriculum and development, I know that my administration and school board trusts and supports me in this type of curriculum delivery. My students got stronger in their speaking, listening, and critical thinking skills, and in learning to truly try to empathize with another's perspective, even if they didn't agree with it. At the end of that two-week unit, students were assigned a culminating choice research project. Of the fifteen-plus options, one was about a woman resisters in our U.S. historical past. One was about the 1619 Project. One of about black historical presidential candidates. I did not force that learning on my students, they chose it for themselves. And to the man who thinks I am brainwashing my students when it comes to Angie Davis, all four students who chose a topic that dealt specifically with Angela Davis pointed out how controversial of a person she was because of her rumored ties with Marxism. They did their research, and they learned to think for themselves. To those who took issue with a teacher wearing a BLM shirt, and those who are worried about a teacher stating whether they're cisgender or not, which is in case you didn't know, I am not, I hope you would also take issue with teachers wearing cross necklaces and heterosexual teachers talking without regard about their wife or husband. If not, ooh, you're showing your bias. Throughout third trimester, I did have two parents express concern regarding stamped. After having conversations with those parents, we were able to find a common ground and work together. And I repeat, there are only two parent concerns. This summer, as I'm trying to enjoy wedding planning, I had to listen to three school board meetings where a rather loud minority group of misinformed community members was speaking slander of my curriculum. I had to sit here and listen to people say that we are forcing things down students' throats and teaching them to think only one way. I am extremely offended by each and every one of you making such a huge stir over something that my students' parents were informed about.
Your three minutes is up, please wrap up your thoughts.
All right, really quick, thank you. Something that my students reflected on every single week, the theme of our ninth-grade English curriculum is perspective-taking. Thank you to those of you who took some time to consider things from our LGBTQ youth and students of color perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Kyoudini.
Good evening. One of the benefits of critical race theory and gender issues being taught in Mount Pleasant Public Schools is the involvement of parents, grandparents, that would be me, and concerned citizens in the curriculum and content of what's being taught in the classroom. Questions are being asked that should have been asked years ago. Does the state of Michigan mandate what is being taught in the classroom at every grade level? Is the state mandating the teaching of CRT and gender issues? Why are we doing this? What are we trying to accomplish? How do you measure a system that is or isn't working? According to published standardized test results of the students graduating from Mount Pleasant High School, sixty percent, six out of ten, are not proficient in reading, writing, and math. How do you address this issue? The federal government has given the state of Michigan over $4 billion for educational purposes. That increases the per-student expenditure to $8,700 per student. How will these funds be allocated in Mount Pleasant Public Schools? Are the priorities and resources of Mount Pleasant Public Schools misaligned with what we should be providing for our kids in order to make them successful? If I'm not proficient in reading, writing, and math, does it really matter if I'm white or black? I want to talk just a moment about this decision you made tonight. I've been really fortunate to, been able to work with and coach volleyball players in Mount Pleasant, and just a couple weeks ago, we were in the gym for four days. There's a volleyball camp, and the upperclassmen were there helping out. And I was talking to some of my players, some of whom I've, who are 12th grade now, who I first coached in the seventh grade. And I asked them if they had been vaccinated. By the way, every girl was masked up. I asked them if they had been vaccinated, and the girls said yes. These are three varsity players. And I asked them why they were, had gotten vaccinated. And they said, so I didn't have to wear this mask. I asked two freshmen, two freshman setters, frankly, who I was working with, if they'd been vaccinated, and both girls said no. And then I asked them, well, why would you, why would you get vaccinated? So I wouldn't have to wear a mask. That, that's their motivation. Last year, seventh grade, we were over in Saginaw, waiting to play a game.
Your three minutes is up, please wrap up your thoughts.
And one of my athletes came up to me and said, I got, I tested negative earlier today. It goes, we're getting tested twice a week, by the way. I got, I tested negative earlier today. Why do I have to wear this mask in competition? Why does she have to wear that mask?
Thank you. Next is Glenda Clark. Glenda Clark? She left, okay, thank you. Pat Berg, Bergy?
Pat Bergy, I spoke at the last meeting. I have two daughters graduate from Mount Pleasant. I graduate from Mount Pleasant, and I have a son that's eighth grader in middle school, and I'm a lifelong resident of Mount Pleasant. First, is your name Lowell here? I think everyone should give this young man a round of applause. That took a lot of courage to get up here and talk. I didn't prepare anything tonight, but, and I wasn't gonna speak, I just threw my name up there, because I wanted to see how the meeting transpired and such. And the teacher right there, I'm the man that talked about your book, Stamped, last week. I have strong beliefs in America, I love my country, I've been to twenty-two countries in my life, now I'm just talking off the top of my head. I've been in countries and broke bread with people that don't have half the rights we have. Countries where women have to wear a mask regardless. They can't even drive a car, they can't even vote. I've also been in countries that we do business with, where they say, we're just like America, but we just can't talk about politics. I won't say what country that is, but it's a really, really big country that's got a navy bigger than ours. So, I guess what I'm trying to say up here is, this is a community coming together on a difficult issue that we need to come together on for the kids. One thing that struck me while I was sitting down there, I oppose CRT. I oppose the fundamental roots of CRT. It is grounded in Marxism. Marxism is a failed concept. Think of Fidel Castro, Hugo Chavez, Vladimir Lenin, go down the list. Marxism fails. And what happened in the 60s is when Marxism was evidently going to fail, the Marxists in America started talking about a different concept. Instead of class conflict, they called it race conflict. In the 1970s is when CRT was first started. And we had a couple of CMU professors, I jotted down some things from, that they talked about at the last meeting, said that those opposed CRT think slavery is good. Nobody thinks slavery is good. Nobody thinks slavery is good. And nobody is denying that we had slavery in the United States. Said that we didn't know our history, that Marxism started in 19th century, CRT was long before that. No, CRT was after Marxism failed. Slavery started thousands of years ago, and it's still going on today. Still in Africa, as a matter of fact. And then one CMU professor got up, and she said that CRT teaches critical thinking. I Googled just before this meeting and said, how do you teach critical thinking? And I was shocked to find that there's a whole debate on whether critical thinking can even be taught. And, and so, and that's what I mean, this is play on words, it's not teaching you to critically- you to critically think.
Three minutes is up, please wrap up your thoughts.
Let me wrap up here, please. So, so that one teacher said, "Ask yourself, why are you critically think about, why are you afraid of CRT? Is it because of Marxism? Then why are you afraid of Marxism?" Let me clarify something.
Please wrap up your thoughts.
Give me thirty seconds, please. I wore a uniform for twenty-five years. I'm not scared of Marxism, I'm fundamentally against Marxism. We've experienced toilet paper shortages, we've got price increases right now, those are things that happen in Marxist countries. So if that's what you really want for this country, you need to think about the concept that you're endorsing here. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of public comment. Next is the Board of Education discussion. This is the opportunity for any board member to discuss any issue or concern that they may have. Does anybody have any?
Yeah, I just want to let everyone know, and I think some of you do know, there is a recall hearing for both Courtney Stedman and myself. The hearing will take place this Wednesday, July 21st, at 3 o'clock. It's in the Isabella County Building, in the Board of Commissioners' room, which is located on the second floor. As the public, I don't believe that there's any interactions you can attend, but I don't believe that you may speak, but if you want to come, I don't know how big the room is, someone asked me if I could comment on the size, I have no idea. But it is, it's this week, that's really all I wanted to add, but I wanted to make sure you guys knew about it.
It's the meet, the boardroom where they hold their monthly meetings, I mean, they can accommodate a crowd.
Right, thank you.
Is there anything else for board discussion?
I would just like to go on record to say, Wilene and Courtney, I feel badly that this is occurring. You guys are outstanding, and I have appreciated getting to know you, getting to know your insights. You don't always agree, but I value you very much, and I'm sorry you have to go through this.
Thanks, Dina.
I would agree. All right, anything else? Not seeing any, I call this meeting adjourned.